That's four one.
I would think it's one tiny pool and it must be a vessel, the pool and the transport are where the strip mall is now. And this one is Anthony from Public Works was telling me that's the same place where the jig cover is now. And I think we're actually seeing discharge into the lake for the boy that should see the water standing in it. But yes, there was a time when people water steamed in the lake. And I'm sure you remember the paddle boats and the hydroplane races and of course the fishing career continues. One of the things that's been somewhat of a mystery to me going back in time has been the water supply in the lake. So talking to your city and theater, it seems that a lot of the water supply up into the cities were from the ice plant. And connected, the lake had been connected to the river prior to 1978. I've got to share something with you from Anthony. It connected to the river then in 1970, drained and cleaned in 1979. And I just know about Hydrilla, the rapation project. The well pump was installed at the same time in 1979. And then the river source stopped working around 2010 as the water not opened in the river. I'll put some pictures of that. I have another study of the lake. The lake has been studied enough. What I did is look at all these studies and talk to so many people about what's the best way to move forward to care for Ellis Lake now. But this slide, this slide, someone might be studying.
2014 by Vice Mayer, 2019 by EPI. And then the very large comprehensive study by HDR in 2021, which the Uva Water Agency was very much involved in. And thanks also to Jeff Matthews who helped me so much just getting up to speed, Jeff from the Water Agency. So from those previous studies, in 2019, the three pilot areas were installed and there's the lot ready hidden today. In 2021, a material called Phosphor was put into the lake to lower the phosphorus level. The phosphorus level in the lake is still very high and it's fertilized to everything green. In 2022, 253 carotides, they found every one of them. I read that in the study. And so the point maker is that this initial work, what we were left with last summer is not pretty. And there it is. That's what the lake looked like last summer. And there's one more. They couldn't even get the boat into the lake. And so this is about the time I started and quickly jumped into action to get the lake treated. You didn't realize how straightforward it could be to treat the lake. The lake engaged with Solitude for management. I'll come back for that. So this goes back to that principle about the lake needing care. It's shallow, it's only about six feet deep. It's 30 acres of six feet deep. Right now, the temperature out there is over 80 degrees. There's non-rail circulation and the lake, the well pump just keeps the lake full. And at this point, there's over 40 years of sediment buildup since 1979 from this first time. So the biology side people characterize the lake as being eutropic, ritual organic nutrient nutrients that support abundant but undesirable plant life. That is what we're battling. So beginning in the fall, we started treating the wellhead water with eutrosor, which neutralizes sequesters is the proper term, phosphorus. The well water itself is high in phosphorus, putting that into the lake. We then proceeded to get the NPTE as permitted. What's interesting, this is a situation where we were cautious. If water from Ellis Lake never went back into the river, you wouldn't need a permit. But there are times that Ellis Lake water can go back into the river, which means it goes into a waterway that's a public waterway. In that case, the permit is required. We err on the side of getting the permit. It wasn't that hard. I mentioned solitude, like management, they've done a great job being available to treat the lake, learning with us what the lake needs to get it clean and keep it clean. The first application of the weed control was in November. And that worked with weeds. They stayed away through the winter, which was easy because the water gets cold and days are shorter. And then again in May of 2024, solitude treated with a sediment treatment to prevent the weed growth. So we were ahead of the curve, just barely. But we treated the weeds ahead of the prevent weed growth. There's been about 10 treatments from solitude at this point. And one led by the city, a couple of weeks ago, I'll talk about that in a minute. The total amount paid to solitude has been, I looked at it again, about $66,000. And we were looking at a budget for around $150,000 a year. So we are doing good so far. Uva Water Agency is definitely a friend of the city. City manager submitted a graphic quest last September and it was received for $300,000. Thank you, Uva Water Agency for that.
Hope you're looking for John.
I did. Charlie's the one that put it, been on your side from the beginning. So we're pretty.
And he's our chairman.
Very good. Next slide. You know, I just haven't find a place to put this in this presentation. The several times that I was out walking around the lake, talking to solitude, asking questions, I would run into people who were picking up trash. And they were just quietly walking around the lake picking up trash. And I talked to them a little bit and they were screwed. And I think that's so wonderful. It shows community pride. So there it is, hair from the lake. And one of the things I think about from the city is working even harder to keep it clean. It just increases people's desire to keep the lake and the area around it clean. One thing we hadn't anticipated was replacing the well pump. That was just done, just finished last week. The existing one, I couldn't figure out how old it was. It was very old. I'm guessing 30 or four more years. Public Works did a great job collecting boats, ended up going to the local companies or pumping irritation. The bid was 44,000. They had to do a little extra work. I don't know if they charged you more for.
I think I have a bill and it's right there.
Yeah. So they were great to work with. Oh, and I have some pictures which follow. That is the old well and that bucket is covering the leaf. Next, there's the leaf from the old well. The barriers were just blown out. That's interesting. They had to clear brush to get that big truck in to lift the well out, the well and the pump to the roof. And there is the new, beautiful motor on a brand new stand. It's interesting, going back to last summer, I estimated the old well was pumping at 14. Anthony told me to do the new well that's pumping at 1400 gallons per meter. So we guessed it just right last year. So here is what the lake looks like now. It's beautiful. Going to longer term options. The objective is, I characterized it, keep the lake pleasant to look at while minimizing use of algaecides and water purifiers. What I mean by that is to look for longer term solutions other than just continuing to dump chemicals in the lake. Chemicals are a bad thing, but to the extent the legal, the lake can be transformed into a more stable apartment, that would be a good thing. The strategy, Public Works monitoring the lake closely and maintaining the lake, they're already doing. And with that, lowering the phosphorus level. The lake body itself is not so prone to grow things. Increasing iteration using floating devices. The existing iteration is a very permanent installation of pipes that go along the that up to the lake and add bubble water after that. Because the lake is shallow, it would be much more comfortable just to use. Like fountains, continuing to monitor the cart, considering the connection to the river. And I added this as well, in conjunction with cleaning up the lake shore and redoing the lake, the lake would make a huge difference because of the long history of sediment filter. The HTR report talks about pump circulation. I looked at it at the bottom. That is putting pipes in the bottom of the lake and pumping water literally to force the water to flow on this lake. It would be as expensive to build and expensive for the electricity. I love it when Public Works people in different cities, especially Marysville, take things on themselves. And so one of the things that we did just a couple of weeks ago now to get the phosphorus down, trying to get the phosphorus down, was to put 80 more gallons of eutrosor in the lake. And Public Works did it and built this out of rapids. It just wouldn't, you could see it didn't cost very much. And so there's a couple of slides showing that progress, that process. There's the boat, Anthony driving it and me navigating.
Put it now, play? That sound definitely works.
Yeah, yeah. You probably missed a lot. So that was $20,000 mostly for the eutrosor chemical. The cost the city had paid for solitude would have been about $31,000 or $32,000. If the city does it again, they don't need. We are, we are not seeing immediate results from that treatment. We are trying to figure out, really focusing on instrumentation now. The effect on the phosphorus level in the lake. And that's what I was working on today. So now to move to reconnecting to the river. I have a privilege for this afternoon of visiting with Bill Fuss and God, a historic book. And it's fascinating to read an excerpt from Ellis's book that he wrote in 1939. Because he was dealing with the same issue that we are right now. And so because it's so applicable, I'm going to read a couple of excerpts that I found. The book was written in 1939. He writes, "About 30 years ago, there was a public demand for fresh water from Ellis Lake, which at that time had not been improved as at present." And he writes, "As a result of this agitation," I call that agitation, "I superintended the construction of a pipe to the levee of 12 and cobalat," which is about where the draw from the river is. Now it's in that area. "So as to obtain a gravity water supply from the Uva River," he goes on to describe how he did it. It cost $4,200 at the time. And then he writes, "This worked very satisfactorily for several years until the river gradually slowed and the intake of the pipe became several feet above a summer river level, which stopped its operation." There is no good reason why the pipe could not now be used for water supply rights or for the lake. The summer river channel is still there and the water is always ample. The cost of the pump and motor to lift the water in the pipeline would be about $1,100. And the cost for electricity for operation would be about $180 for three months operation. So we dealt with the same thing somewhere between 1,900 and 1,800. Yes, reconnecting to the Ellis River. That Ellis went to the river is highly desirable. The water is clear, clean and low in phosphorus. It's also a real opportunity because of the relationship with the Uva Water and the city. They're vested in the city and obviously the city has a very positive relationship with them. I think we're going to see the video now. Now first I'm going to go through the list. One of the things I was so excited to do was to see the apparatus, but in seeing it was discouraging. This is a list of where we are with regard to the existing apparatus that's there. And some of this information all so came in communication from Water Agency pilots. There's no water rights the city has or no contact with water.
I've heard of one that at least to pick over in fact, we did that in one of us. They were that.
We have a contract?
No, no, nothing contract. It's an actual water right that would have followed the lack of the term. When it wasn't used, I think that was like.
I have heard similar things there. I have saw that which, you know.
The reason, the reason I recommend apologists is that to put into that, in fact, we did it. We did that, how it was put in suspense or lost or whatever. And is there any view regarding that lake? Covering that way. Because as I understood the story, it was a, it was not the main decision people, it was a. Uh, head of public works or city engineer. Let it go and. And the city service, if that's the case.
It's factually.
I'm not a net. But we do have access to the water agency and one of that and stuff they could probably help you figure out.
We could actually also have two of those end to the water agency and they do it as a couple of options. Have a fire response contract with the city. That's here in Washington.
Yes, and it's just the water rights are are physically liquid gold. And for. That's through non-use, uh, and the same thing is so regret. Uh, perhaps there's a means to recover if you.
Hey, water rights is one issue. Another issue that came up. On a recurring basis in my conversations with John Hattie at the agency. Was the existing point takeout from the river is not a defined point of diversion. Which is a very important regulatory right definition, the state water resource control board. So that would have to be established. The existing slant pump, vertical slant pump is is worn out. The location as you'll see among, um. Or because the the river level level has dropped. The electric service, the heating and electric service is removed. In my research, research, I couldn't find the reported easement across the private. Edge of the river and the levee, although the gentleman that lives there did come out and talk to us when we were there. And, um, I got the sense. Historically, when water was being pulled out of the city, they had a cap. So they were irrigating that area around there. Um, but the point is there's no easement there. Even if there was an easement there, it served us because the pumping point needs to be moved to a different point along the line. When the levee was reconstructed recently, the pipe was removed that goes through the levee. Um, and then finally, from what I've been told. Whereas the stormwater was moved through the storm drain system and the likely we can provide it now. And what's interesting, in that book, I read one sentence that indicated it was the same pipe along. Probably the same pipe that has been there for decades that brought water. From the river to the lake. Let's see if we have the video in the next one. There we go. So this is the levee. You can see the pump. Motor in the bottom of the picture moving from left, right and view. And I don't know if this, I found it in the files I got. By the city engineer. So coming around, you can see that beautifully clear water river and the intake structure. And what you'll notice is that. It's structured as almost out of the water. Although you worked on this a few years ago, didn't you? Yeah, I don't think it would work now. It's too far out of the water.
Okay, there's, uh, I don't know who would be regular approval. Downstream about four hundred, five hundred yards and a turn, um. Who's got that by the spot and also. Looking to the. Uh, so just spoke with the property owner, whose land lies between that spot. And the entry point of the city and the landowner was top red up there.
You see the bend in the river.
That's right. That's English is at the top of the picture, right? Would be a place to. I got that right, Charlie?
Yeah, if you go further down, you'll see an old pump top. Cement block in that same area where we were new, uh, pumping.
Administration to be all getting all these files that I was able to go through. Okay, moving on. So I'll go through some of the things we've learned about what it would take to reconnect. Up to twelve and part of which requires saving federal and up to twenty-four months to get them. And around fifty-four thousand dollars minimum expected cost. This was in the HCR study. And then we revisited it with a E Corps people that the city has worked with some of the past. So it's a big deal that from new provision to go that hard.
Mr. Ellis did not have any problems.
Mr. Ellis did not have his problems. Thank you. So here's the cost breakdown permitting, the river pump, the levy crossing. And the big, big islanders moved on the net, which was thirty-three hundred feet of pipe to get from the levee. Um, over to the lake, which includes going on the railroad tracks. Three million dollars, that's what to remember. And so this next slide, let's hope. It's a little bit hard to see. You can see it and you see it in your reports. I wanted to spend a little bit. Talking about this. Is it in the council back?
It's on the dais.
Yeah, it's, it's made she can't admire the world. So first let me explain what I've got in here. It's a comparison chart table, obviously. You can see investment cost across the top. And then operating cost across the middle. And there's a well over side on the left, the river water side on the right. And for each of them, they have replenishment only, that is the cost for replenishment of the lake water only, just to keep it full. Then to turn the lake water over continuously. Nine times a year is based on nine months of knowing. That's how we came up with nine hours a year. With regard to investment costs, the well is pretty easy. In fact, this just happened. The city spent forty-four, forty-four thousand plus a little bit for the injection system. And what I've done is I've divided that cost over twenty years. It's a very simple approach, but the intent, without making it too complicated, is to give us a sense. For comparative cost. So what you see for the well is that the annualized capital cost for twenty years is about twenty-five hundred dollars. Whereas for the rear water at three million dollars, the annualized capital cost for twenty years is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's a lot more. Giving us the benefit of enjoying that water over twenty years with the capital investment or maybe. When we look at operating costs, I have given every benefit I could to rear well. For example, where I'm saying replenishment for the well size twenty-three thousand. I have it at sixty-four hundred dollars if it's river water. And the reason it's less. I'm giving us the benefit of a little bit of gravity flow. Side over the leg. Where I am showing phosphorus control at forty thousand dollars for the well water. Replenishment only, it's zero. For river water. So I'm assuming that if river water is used, we are not gonna have to deal with phosphorus control. Um. And so across the bottom, what you see is the comparison. And I compare comparing to well replenishment only, which is our mode of operation right now. If we turn the water over nine times a year with the well, it's very expensive. Because of electricity, because of all that wellhead phosphorus treatment, we would never do that. Plus it would wear the well. And well, wear their pump out. So that would be two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars more than return operation. When we go with river water replenishment only. It shows ninety-six thousand dollars more. Most of which is caused by a capital cost upfront. And river water train the lake over nine times is not that much more. So this is important because it enables you to look in a very systematic way at the cost comparison.
So I've written this right, what you're doing is you're buying down the operating cost. By seventy-five percent. So. From four forty-nine to one thirteen.
Yes, if it's.
So you're buying that down with the three-way investment. So return on the investment is. Uh, three hundred and seven thousand years. So it's actually. Yeah, the payback period is ten, it's less than ten years. Capex. This will be seen here.
One thing I didn't mention that I need to say, uh, for for water. Is I use the cost of the water at ten dollars a liter, but those of you who are in the water industry. What I was told is that a reasonable level would be fifty. And in times of drought, a water fee will be five hundred dollars a liter. Ten dollars a liter fee. Assuming who does it apparently because Uber Water Agency loves the city and. Might do that. I did.
Well, it's. Average depth over five feet, so. A fifty thousand liter series. A hundred fifty.
The agency was a part. Agency from a fourteen year.
Yes. Let me get going and come back to this. There are also concerns about the river water. Trying to be realistic. That it wouldn't be available during times of drought when the water is restricted for the protection of fish. I already mentioned the market value, river water can be much higher than what I've used. We would still need to use the well if the river water is not available. And unless there is continuous flow through the lake, the lake would still be. Even though the lake is still mainly contributed to regionality, that would be different if the lake is strained and dredged. For a long time until it gets saturated again with the green stuff. Next. The suggested next steps regarding the river water. Is to establish primary contact with the regulatory agencies to find out what they're. To evaluate really what we're getting into as far as the permits are concerned. Before spending a lot of the money or diving in are at first. And also, of course, to continue discussions with Uber Water Agency regarding regarding long-term water access to water. And and long-term coughed water. Those would be the next two key steps to pursue. Not engineering design, but and that needs help, but more than global issues that have made us think of on no doubt.
Two, two decisions, two points. One being the regular short question. And that's a function of time and month. Two years and three hundred thousand, it's a change, right? That expense is really hard to make, half a trillion. I'm in some favor of that, should send your paper. Pretty good, and what gives you, you know, my. It's a two, two decision, I assume. That's. Water agency because the, because three way comes as much. So that's our representation.
By concluding slide then, first and third and primary, the lake has to receive ongoing care. Just like the landscape around it, it has to receive ongoing care. Of alone. And with that comes continuously monitoring the lakes. Your public work staff has been doing a great job doing that. Um, long-term solutions such as phosphorus and continuing to work with staff to try to sort that out. Um. The more public works doing maintenance of the lake, Jason Zuma has his. Happy to have a license now and be able to apply their supervised application on behalf of the city. And is interested in doing that, that will save much money. Um, once that can implement. And then, of course, pursuing other options, which is to be connections to the river. It's beautiful, clean, clear water to be sent, uh, already the place in the lake in the cube one or two. There was no question about it. Um, especially if there could be a continuous flow, that would be. A lot of Uber River, River water to do that. And that, I think, is the last slide. That is it.
It would seem that everything would go according to my, my agreement with this. In Charlotte's agreement and others, Rob and Paul. And paper, which is part of this. A two-year, um. Granted receiving waters, seeking two years for maintenance. And it seems to stop would be straight up city staff and public workers. That cost is not gonna be as much as it's.
It will not be as much, even with the brand new well, it will not be.
So three hundred thousand, what, most three years?
And then let us keep it.
Yeah, this is definitely two to three. That's just up with the regulatory. Um, certainly through regulatory rules and pay consults and what that, whatever you have to do. So. Um. There's the capital to engage the regulatory actor and move. Do that in parallel, rotating the lake in the next couple of years. And then perhaps be the decision point on the capex, the part of the capital expenditure requirement three million dollars. Yeah, that, well, the presentation, excellent presentation.
Thank you, Alex. This is nice. When I do research, I think these people's brains, they don't clap.
Well, it's good, it's, uh, it's actually good. On the, the number of times, uh, it's been talking about the right thing, well, for the second set up, it's in there. Also know that bottom of that thing is pipe, which is what. Seeping out, we have any type. How much deeper we'd be able to take it, because I remember. It's that it's still only five or sixteen and that's.
Okay, Mr. Ellis, in his book, it finds that it's six feet deep.
Oh, if you dredge down to the pipe. Right there. That's the point, I'm gonna ask the question. You dredge down the supply. That, that doesn't.
First of all, yeah, you know, we're part of this for a long time. I pretty did, I pretty did put together a set of things and very well organized site. Doesn't want to lie on what we're dealing with. Uh, I did want to ask some questions on. Well, versus river water connection or alternatives. If you're in a river lake over nine times a year. The rate of evaporation isn't going to get rid of the water to the dump it. Water in nine times a year, so is there any calculation on what it's going to take to. Extract the amount of water that it would need to, obviously, out of the north end. And is there any estimated cost on the path would be to be able to lower the lake level to replace the freshwater? Well, if the water, if there was to be a continuous summer flow like that, the water would continuously be running over the years. At the northern end of the lake and the middle of the river. But we have to determine the pump stop to get the water out of the lake in the way that it's. Only in those. That's okay. Yeah, thank you.
The, the consultants who are heard by the waters, you see, when we're discussing this three years ago. Saying that was. Solution, evolution is circulation. Start, Ellis.
Um, thank you for your presentation. I think do not get help of anybody. No, this is just a presentation, it's a very, very. All right, excellent presentation, and while I have a microphone. I mean, soon we will be receiving the design of the landscape. For the hour of the lake, once that's presented. You're going to love what we've done with Ellis Lake.
First of all, shot, you remember.
Quality.
Charlie, God, you didn't get your five things out. I don't know what you're on the bottom, I didn't want to.
The water agency was formed for flood control. And and water development. And it was a special industry. It was a guaranteed when we built the dam. It protects haters in U of County. Guaranteed the bonds, but of course, nobody buy the bonds unless PG&E said they would make the payments. The theme. Water agency is controlled by the people who define it. So as long as we can stay within our mission, which we think we can, we can help Ellis Lake. Very much. But we have to stay within the guidelines of water developments. And flood control to make sure that we don't get off of our mission. And alert somebody to try to attack us. Oh, that, oh. Evaporation is about five acre feet a year. Or five, yeah, five feet.
Five feet, that's what the lake.
And if the lake holds two hundred acre feet. That would be two hundred acre feet a year of evaporation and percolation. So I believe your contract.
I believe the evaporation, that point was. Water, then otherwise travel down the river there and meet at the compost of the U of. Make a trip through Ellis Lake into Jack's Loop, back to the Federal River. And back to that very same spot, net of the evaporation, which would happen on the river anyway.
No, and you're right, yes, and you're, what you raised is the water, it doesn't evaporate and percolate. You put into the lake, take out of the lake, the net effect on the river is zero. So you have an argument to say, or the agency does, we're putting water into Ellis Lake. Taking it out, same amount, so we're not using.
Is it ever going to be a swappable lake?
It's wild.
Is it ever going to be a swappable lake?
It's pretty slim.
I walked when I was in high school, the water speed in Ellis Lake. So when you clam it. And if you look at some of the pictures that they had in front of the Oaf, you can now look down the rocks. And see the bottom of Ellis Lake. It's very, it's very close to the swappable right now. So the city, if there are chemicals, an outstanding gap. If we put fresh water in, they would be able to do even a much greater.
Would you know that Ellis also wrote in his book Reasons That the Lake Never Be Filled Again? And one of them was it would take too much fill when there's none nearby. But the other thing he writes about is the importance of storm drainage. Go back to nineteen thirty.
I would see it become a swappable lake for the community. I think that'd be pretty tough. Not, I think that's.
That should be a goal.
I think, thank you, I agree. I agree.
Maybe I can come to South there.
Early as you're representative for the north area with U of Water Agency, my district is pretty much everything that's not town. Don Lenz is your current representative for the city, Rennie House will be taking over. Uh, so I can't speak for anybody else, but I'm in favor of. This man honor board for your sake.
Glad to be in the policy, actually, man. Questions, Ellis? And good thanks to this was true.
Thank you so much. The city has been incredibly supportive of the people from U of Water Agency have been great. Uh, it's been a really fun project as well.
As for most people certainly, it's been admirable of the city website.
Yes.
Good.
Can I make one other comment? Uh, Dale Whitmore, myself, been working on this project for twelve years. And we're very excited for getting so close to making it come to fruition. And with the help of people, like our speaker and your manager.
Anyone wishing to address the council concerning concern, governor items. Or on matters not already on the agenda. Uh, more. Obviously, Kedness, if you're gallery, you can do a super scrub from the city clerk. If online, you can raise your hand and it all will be checked by a certain order. Please remember to do the comment that the council is not permitted to take in the action for discussion on. Yeah, I'm not, just want to share sentence for the.
No speakers tonight, mayor.
In all matters on content agenda are considered routine and are therefore ruled by one motion. Unless a council member or the city manager first requests that a matter be moved. Let me shut it up. For separate discussion and. But it's the will of the council. We can do a poll, say. Move the segment, follow the favor. And as before, if anyone wants to speak for the matter, um, you're very. Speakers counted, call a line, raise your hand, and get your, that is the order. Uh, certain consideration is support. Homeless drug addiction and reduction act. Opposition thirty six, homelessness, drug addiction. Chief Christian Sacks, is your insurance? Staffs here before you to request a reload resolution. Of supporting Prop sixty six, it is the homelessness, drug addiction, and reduction act. So the proposals are. Basically, it's known as reforming Prop forty seven. Uh, so the Prop forty seven. There was definitely some challenges with that, so either here or in the back room, there was. Possesses of Prop forty seven, to include the U P organized retail back to inner city. Uh, closing through the inner city stores and difficulty to convince the people to seek drug, uh, help, uh, treatment. Therefore, with the retail tax, which is probably business in the around this California. Um, this measure will hopefully be a better, more accountable for safety of our communities rather than putting it back on the streets. Uh, with the fentanyl crisis, uh, responsible for over twenty percent of youth deaths in California. So the Prop thirty six, it was defined, uh, given the fentanyl, also the hard drug. Then a more accountable and grant for judges, uh, creative discretion, ten sixteen chapters. So across the board, we're going to fill some of the stuff that Prop forty seven put in place and a whole repeater. On the retail fence side along with harsher penalties for the fentanyl crisis.
No speakers, mayor.
Tom, I say if you can access the resident's good five, I just want to let you know that. That our new county district attorney is in favor of this, I mean, I share with some favor of this.
And, uh, that's, so. Anybody else wants to speak to this? I have a problem comments now, please, what's the belter?
Um, yeah. Appreciate us coming forward and having the opportunity to support this resolution as. It's been an issue that I've been focused on for. A number of months now, um, which is reforming. You know, just to to share a little bit of the story. You know, our DAs and our local jails were impacted with regulations of Prop forty seven, which basically lowered. Drug possession and drug dealing from felony to now to misdemeanor. Uh, it. Hell, that from four hundred and fifty dollars per incident up to nine hundred and fifty dollars. In which it would be, this would be a felony felony. And it basically opened into a lot of infractions that they could have or violations that somebody could have. Without any true consequence, so thirty six. Prop thirty six performs thirty seven and brings that back down to three violations, that would be third violation. It can become now felony in both of those categories that I explained. And then there's actual consequence to, you know, the crime that they're committing. Pretty forty seven, and I I had a very long conversation with. That hurry, and the way that our criminal system used to work. When when somebody looked out these violations or had to go into. Business system, I actually found that there was more people getting. I drown because they were forced to go into. And not only that, by the time they actually went through. They had a clear mind, they can make better decisions, the less help they're living, so the impacts and the results. Of Prop forty seven's done has really been. In the homeless situation where you just see this with all every door of people and living in their dictions. Uh, I consider Prop thirty six compassionate in the left state level approach. It's, uh, it's actually has the potential to help people get their lives cleaned up and get straightened out. Um, there's a lot of effort, the campaign, the signature campaign, that's everyone. That called the ballot. Um, there was lots of intervention in Sacramento. Uh, through the back half of June, uh, to try to prevent it from being on the ballot. Uh, which I think. Amplifies its need even greater. And, uh, and I'm excited that we're going to have John in the vote on it in November. Hopefully, take the opportunity and make a pitch this Friday, we're, uh, having a fundraiser event. Five three O event center is supposed to buy, uh, our share of Landers and. Organization that I share, which is free California, uh, John McGinnis is the speaker, who's also been champion of this. And a number of others, and I'd encourage you who help support true change. But this is absolutely a necessity for California. I'm gonna, and there might be some other comments. I've made a motion that we pass this resolution.
Prop forty seven. Was the same schools, everybody was at, they were looking like that. Politics, but. Hey, I'm the attorney general's office. And attorney general at that time was currently in national politics. Absolutely. Really important. The category, five, three, oh, six, a box, and it's. Sure. Prop thirty six is across the. A motion. So we'll. Okay, bye. Maybe requesting that one, it's, um. Nice for you, my home, please. Stuart's ready.
Thank you. I have not had any meetings recently. Uh, we, anything to report? I would like to, um, say that this Friday. Party is going to conflict with her because it's a very important issue. But, um, there's been a revival of Marysville, U of City, Dick Littlegate. And, um, apparently my party is the last one. I don't remember the year that I graduated, I think. Uh, it was the season of seventy. All the elections were, uh, invited, I'm not sure if anybody else is able to make. On the U of City's officials, and, um, I know Mark Boom Garden is going to make it, I hope. They're probably, I'm not sure. Mark was, we're probably the last ones that played in that game, the Big Little Gay. So it's gonna be fun, if you're not going to the Prop thirty-six, I'm at the high school. A lot of fun. And on top of that Saturday, there's so many events going on. Saturday instead of Taco Fest. It's National Football Day.
Yeah.
That's the challenge.
Yeah.
Well, I took this to the point now, this definitely, I assume finding the city is probably, for instance, a lot of late. Yeah, I guess, you know, it might be so early, so there is. Yeah. Let's see that.
Me, I have a committee report. So I'm on the homeless coalition. I mean, the homeless coalition has not met for a few months, but so I have statistics for the month of July and July last year. The statistics are really important for people to thank you very much. The system is and what's going on with the homeless. And so for the month of July, a hundred and ninety-seven people came through Yuba Sutter Homeless Coalition Program. It's governed by the homeless coalition, I think there are thirty-seven agency entities that are involved in this whole coalition. For Marysville, which is Yuba County, our point of entry is the life center. So a hundred and eighty-seven revisited or came into the Yuba Sutter area, sixty-nine Sutter County, and a hundred and twenty-eight revisited the homeless coalition programs. Sixty-four of them are new to the area in Yuba County. They entered the system in July. Fifty-two percent of them were behavioral health problems. Physical disability, thirty percent, so those of them that are physically disabled, thirty percent of them came through the system because of their disability. Substance abuse, for July, nineteen percent, which is surprising to me, but it is. Domestic violence, those that experienced domestic violence that are now homeless, seven percent. Vets, this is really good news, zero, okay, so zero veterans came through our Yuba Sutter programs in March of July, so, I mean, good news and, you know, heartwarming really. Severance statistics, household with kids, seventy-nine percent of the people that came through Yuba Sutter area are household that are homeless with kids. And that had a G income of fifteen hundred dollars a month, so they get any time, but it's only fifteen hundred dollars a month for people who have children. Without kids, thirty-nine percent came through the system, and that had a G income of five hundred fifty-seven hundred dollars. So we probably get social security or something. January to July, two hundred and sixty-one towers in Yuba County alone, so these programs found two hundred and sixty-one in July, thirty, in July, thirty were out in Yuba County. Fourteen, fourteen orbit, life center, or the depot, those are the three places we have for people. And the depot is for families. Life center is for marital women. And fourteen orbit, I wrote to the little bungalows, you know, to pay for the little homes that helpers put installation in, okay, so they lived there during the summer and gone. Now, this is the thing we need to understand. The new Supreme Court decision has enabled the governor of the state of California to enact and sweeping clean, it's cleaning this, it is sweeping everyone out. The mayor of San Francisco is busing individuals out of the city. Mayor San Jose is doing insane. So what does this mean for us? We're on a transit route, and we need to know that this is now happening. As mayor, I'm going to bring, there is an article in the state that the Democrats sent you. If someone else's article, but it's in page B, describes what the various behaviors in the Bay Area are doing. Now, the Supreme Court was allowed, the state of California, to sweep camps out of the cities. I just wanted to be aware of that just happened. And this is my committee, any questions, I mean?
So another really important thing is much Paco, we got another in San Francisco, Paco, Paco, soon in the north part. Use our transit board, met last, and we are going to be doing our micro change in the next few months, very little bit of pressure to those who take the buses, it's still on the website. As for my committee comments, I just want to say thank you, Dan Verden, and the courts for keeping this raised on. Those emails have been really nice, if you ever read them, you know, the foster checks and so forth, that, you know, Jay. From Jason. Thank you, um, thank you, Greg. That's thank you, everybody, for your
Uh, yeah, I don't have any meeting reports to say, but I do want to say that in the ten, the national night out event, which was when our last house meeting was scheduled, it was our sixth involved, it was a great turnout, so a lot for better and for worse, and it was a lot of fun, and so just want to give a shout out to our public service and thank them for everything that
I have two, and I'll commit one on confidence in the hotel. Sure, by the hotel, but it's rather than be present. Well, I would rather me try to explain it very complicated. A lot of hotels are quite numerous, and even with the release of the Star Grand System and First Grandness, and then longer in actions in terms of both in city, technically, both city and rural city. As to confidence. Or call the medicine health is over there, environmental, they they just have the approval of the project, how we're setting coming into there, so waiting all of the new layers outside of there. Only more traffic. That environmental impact report is having a significantly efficient and in fact, the scouts will be able to pay all of our train fees, which should amount to a minimum of six hundred dollars. And we have a cabinet to do that, if we have a cabinet to go after them. Scheme of confidence. Whereas now, what was not exactly what the environmental impact report can look like, or for a settlement that will meet somebody. The last, as a question, that's unfolding just of that at a future meeting, we can have a report from this department and our city attorney of what the impact of the grants passed decision is and what kind of latitude that gives, additional latitude that gives the city through and other departments to manage homelessness. And it's, as I've heard, Congressman Gilchrist describe, big kind of system, usually a big one get out of the system, back in the running block. And we all know, you know, that's a literally part of some of those trying to do that. And they are climbing in our community. So the best test decision, the United States Supreme Court overturned a decision called the Boise decision, in which case the most, particularly those looking out of the street. The captains were on comfort, and comfort is contained. At the appropriate time was this department, they were kind of, the city is very interesting to have a, we said on the alert, update to the council in terms of now, of course, we have a city
Not for this meeting, ma'am.
This is city thirty dollars, I see.
This is, this is city, I have a lawyer on my body. First of all, I wanted to say that there are consultants and that there are good consultants. And Dan Verden is one of our good consultants, he has something I got on. Not only the Ellis Lane, but our refuse, friends, or consumers in the past and continue to right now. The other man, Mr. Flores, I did know all of this of events that are coming up. So despite of the hotel and all that stuff, we're moving right along. Like there, we took it to the twenty-four Taco Fest. We also have on September seventh, Grand Fair, the event for September seventh, also my favorite, Blue Fest at Bryant Field. Also, the Major Health Fair at Bryant Field, and you can see it, we're doing Bryant Field quite a bit more. September eleventh, this is another exciting one, Cock and Foster statue unveiling. Hopefully, everybody can make that. Of course, the first week through the fifteenth, the rodeo in Stampede. There will not be the cattle ride this year. That was the only thing that, that, that's on COVID four. Other Bryant Field events, Yuba Center, Yuba Center, Jane for Congress, Facebook, Yuba Center, who's going to be there. In Yuba County, it's Yuba County. So other things going on, yeah, the work phase two, will be starting soon. We're gonna get that slide. Been received approval from the USSBA on bones, if this is affected by the fire. And so the Yuba Center, you can see it working with all that out, the community development director. Mr. Dumas, applied for some vouchers, contract, federal area quality management, full commitment history. For some electric mowers, chainsaws, enders, and trivers. And we never turn out anything free like Jason. Will be test driving commercial grade. Do you want to turn on the waters here pretty soon? And the council looks like they're spending probably can't. Great interest in large lots. And then he ran, or it's Mike Rock, not at Bryant Field. We have new dispatcher coming on, so that's good news. The United States Representative, Doug will allow me here in Marysville, I hope you have a meeting, August twenty-second for town hall. Start clock, that should be a cycle. Also, just recently submitted, post-submitted a grant with Chinese community. It's a, will help us define and plan China Town area, so that we can preserve some of that China Town architecture and culture in what would be considered a disadvantage community. And then last, all the fire ability building. Two apparatus. And now we have a new home, that building is sheltered up and there's this finishing up. So I'm sure there will be some type of ceremony opening that. That is all I have.
On the show, when I, I walked in the room, I had walked in the room, and this one part of the neighborhood. And this morning I observed at commute time, or wanting to get time traffic at fourteenth and G, where the roundabout has been placed to be the grant that we're receiving for calling travel. In terms, in terms of earlier watched, we thought that was there, cars would be moving each direction. And they're saying why slow down, I play part of it because people don't know how to operate a roundabout. But I'm just having hopefully, we can use this model, maybe, may pack more of this for this being September thirtieth, twenty-four and six people.
Yubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumislakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at five three zero seven four nine eight eight zero zero. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.